Got anybody here that's submitted bids? Two thousand twenty-three, newer tandem axle cab and chassis with thirty-five thousand gallon asphalt. Southeastern. Blacktopper, number one, share number five, number two, five-nine-three-six-seven. Price, share in twenty-three thousand, fifty dollars. Yeah, they're pricing in there. I'm the only one. Yeah.
Oh, the tank in front.
From Randice. Five thousand gallon capacity. Asphalt distributor. Product key, head selling price, thousand and three, five hundred and thirty-one dollars.
What was that price again?
Four zero three, comma, five three one. Thank you for your bids. Typically, we take these under advisement and then prove them out future.
I do entertain a motion to take both bids under advisement.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor. I can pass this three zero. Yep, thank you.
Hey, the project updates. The Montgomery Bridge in June, they finished the construction of the modular block walls. Today, the beams, they're gonna set the beams, I think there's about six beams. And I believe they're lining the Montgomery Main Street right now. But they're gonna set them today and just do some other work securing them this month. And then August, they're supposed to start pouring the concrete deck on the bridge. So setting the beams is kind of a big milestone as far as getting the the bridge to completion. And there's still roadwork to be done. We were having a discussion this morning about that. Hopefully, they can start on that roadwork here as schools getting ready to start Montgomery. At least get the road in there on the the north side of the bridge. But we don't have any firm, firm date on the road date, but they are setting the the beams today. So that's a, you know, that's a, I guess, a big relief or a milestone that we've made it to. I guess I could have brought some pictures and showed everybody, but so far, it looks good. The the block walls look good and.
They, on those beams, they got delayed, I think, two weeks because of some erosion issues. And CSX made them correct the erosion issues where they can set the beams. So they shouldn't do that a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, the erosion and the mud on the, mud on the tracks. Which that is an issue that has to be taken care of. But I don't know that you could say, because this ain't done, that the erosion, that we can't set the beams. Basically, they wouldn't okay the plan to set the beams. So the the plan's either good or it's not good.
Yeah.
To be okayed.
As far as the October timeline, are we still looking?
Yeah, October is supposed to be open. I think November's the actual completion.
Completion date.
Right.
Completion date. And according to our financials, we're like fifty percent through. So fifty percent completion is getting, getting built out. So we're halfway there, I guess. Little update on the, I've gotta call out the Corey Hubler of REO for the mine through on on two hundred North. I think we're probably six months into the contract we signed out of a thirty-month contract for the road closure. They had told me that they're working, they're still working with two utility companies to secure the agreement on moving the utilities. That hasn't been done yet. But they said they're, they feel that they're close to to reaching an agreement with them. They've got the closure date. They had originally told me the tenth of July, but they had moved it to the seventeenth. The the seventeenth is when they plan on closing the road. And then the utilities will be moved and stuff like that, other little things that need to be done. And then on the twenty-seventh, or twenty-fourth of July, I think I wrote it down here. Where, yeah, the twenty-seventh, we're gonna come in and and mill out the blacktop that's on the road. So we've got a milling machine scheduled so we can mill up that blacktop off the road and utilize that in other areas. It's probably eight thousand dollars to to rent the milling machine per day. But the tonnage we figured that we could get out of it, we would be getting five dollars a ton for for millings. Best case.
How many tons?
I don't, I don't remember what the tonnage is. I'm sorry. But it's fi, it'd be five dollars a ton is what we figured. So I didn't bring that information with me. I thought about it as soon as you said that.
We we did email, they were gonna come in maybe quarterly and just talk about their progress. Is that something that they still willing to do?
He's actually, Josh has texted me, October twenty-fourth, they're gonna be at the highway.
October twenty-fourth?
They're gonna be at the highway.
And I had called Cory, that's, I guess he's the site manager. I called him this morning and was waiting for, he's not got a chance to call me back. But trying to remind him of that or get a date scheduled, if you've got that, that that works.
Chris, how are we on five hundred East for that cut-through road from two hundred to one hundred?
Five hundred East started getting tiled this week. We wanted to get it tiled last year. But before we got this agreement done, when we started tiling, we ran out of rock. We couldn't get rock with the trucking situations last year. And we finally had to call the tiling projects off. So so it is tiled. And it'll be a dust-free road. It may not be completely surfaced like what we would have wanted it to. But by the time the mines milled through two hundred North and the traffic have to do a runaround, we'll have a dust-free road on five hundred East for the traffic to go. Whether we decide to do that with chloride or oil.
Right.
Till it completely settles out, that will give the the motoring public something safe and dust-free to to travel on.
How many miles of road do you think you'll get tiled this year?
We're probably shooting for fifteen. I mean, if everything goes right. Like I said, last year, we were, we were shooting for fifteen last year, and I think we got to ten.
Good.
I got another, a couple of little things. Robbie Blackwell, he, after thirty-two years, I think he started in July nineteen ninety-one, he's gonna retire. So he's been telling me this for a long time, but he's finally made it official and signed the paper. It took him a couple of weeks to actually sign the paper, but he did. So we'll have that truck driver's position open. And we do have a a maintenance position open right now. So we did real good filling our positions this year. And with that being said, we took the opportunity, LTAP was offering a class, a train, trainer for CDLs. We haven't had a real big problem with hiring CDL employees. It seems like everybody else has, so we figure we might get there. So I've got Troy Foose, which works for us and has his Class A CDL. I'm putting him through a class at no charge. And so if we decide to hire somebody without a CDL, we could train them. They still have to go to the state facility to get their actual license. But we're eliminating the step where these people have to pay three to six thousand dollars to take so many hours of classroom instruction. So I might get a lot of phone calls now today for people looking for a job. But just to let you guys know, that's what what we're doing.
So Troy will get certified to train then?
Yeah, he's, he's in the process of doing it. This is actually, today's his second day that he's, he's taking the classes.
Regarding Mr. Blackwell, when's his last day?
August third.
Okay, on maybe July twenty-fifth, when we have our highway meeting, can you maybe have him bring him in?
Yeah.
I forget the last gentleman we did that with, but that was kind, that was nice.
That was Jeff Petty.
Jeff Petty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
We'll plan on that.
Okay. I will need Grant to.
Keep it a secret.
Yeah, they're probably listening, unless the recording's not working.
And we turned down his retirement.
Tell him we turned it down.
Yeah.
But Grant, I probably need you to help me write up an agreement with Milestone. We give Milestone the CCMG bid, awarded them that that grant that we have to do the work up north for our paving this year. And typically with Endot, we turn in a couple of forms, in Form ninety-six. Usually would surpass as a contract between us and Milestone to do the work. But Endot said that their auditors are, they don't like that anymore. So now we've got to come up with the actual agreement, construction agreement with them. And I, I just found out yesterday. So I I probably need to get it pretty fast, so I'll get you the information and see if we can draw something up and get it signed and get it turned back into Endot before the the deadline.
What's the deadline?
It's four months after we awarded it.
When did we award it?
I don't know. It was, I might have it in here.
We'll, we'll get it offline.
Yeah, I can't remember when we awarded it, but we've gotta have all that information turned in within four months after we we awarded it to them, else we'll lose our our funding. We're probably a month and a half into it, but I don't know the exact date. And I believe I got enough information now to put a bid out for the salt building. I know we talked about it at the last meeting to pursue one way or the other. I can't remember if we decided to go ahead and advertise, and I'd left for vacation and.
Yeah, I think we're all ready to move forward with it so we can advertise for bids. I mean, as long as you guys are comfortable with the structure and the material type.
Yeah, I think as long as you get your specs the way you want them, just get it out for bid.
Yeah, I I I put the specs together since the last meeting. So I got the specs of what we would require. And I've, I've got enough information to to put out the bid. If I get the, I guess if we get the okay to.
Go ahead, we might just go ahead and make a motion.
And the cost is relative, however, I've yet to see a building being built where someone said, boy, it's just too big. So.
Yeah.
Obviously, we can't build more than we grossly need, but we need to build for the next twenty, twenty-five years.
Well, I think after conversations with you guys, we had decided to to not only build just a salt barn, but build a salt barn and a little extra on it, which we would have a dividing wall to use storage so we can get rid of our other two buildings that we've, we've got here in town. We got one on, what, Third Street and one on Kefron and Walnut.
I'd like to move, you know, get all the other properties that we got outlined, get those sold to.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. If we, when we bid this out, if we can build like what we think we need and then maybe a slightly larger version, just to see what's the price differences of the two. We may be surprised with the two bids. Yeah, the two bids and.
Okay.
Along with that, I'd like to go ahead and order appraisals on the old salt building so we can get it moved. Have some interest in that.
And open the old highway department down here too, the same way, get those things moved to Northern County. But on that specs, I guess you gotta try to have it complete by December thirty-first this year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we want, whoever does it, we want them to start right away.
Yes, yes, I do, yeah.
I'll, I'll go back to the office today and and.
And with a project this size, I mean, do we need it? Sometimes bringing in an architect for a smaller project like this isn't terribly expensive. I mean, do we need that's, that seal set or is, are the vendors okay?
I think the vendors with what we're looking at, because they've gotta get, for buildings X amount of square feet, they've gotta get some permitting and stuff to do that anyways.
I didn't know with the add-on, the multipurpose portion of it, if if.
If it gets bigger than that. I'll, I'll, I'll double-check it, but.
Okay.
I know talking with a couple of the the pole barn vendors, they pretty much provide that. They've got their in-house engineers and and they've got, they've gotta apply for some permits from the state to build buildings that big.
Okay. Yeah, I'd entertain a motion to move forward with the bids and also the appraisals of the current salt building.
You want salt building in down here at the highway garage or?
The highway garage at this time, I don't think will be.
I think we pull that one out for now.
Right now, okay. So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
And then the, I give you guys an update on the, it's not our project, but the Odin, Odin's West Street project. This, I think Phil did this before he left. And I think I was under the impression that the county highway is supposed to facilitate the payment of our commitment to their project. Is that how you guys want us to do that?
I talked to Chris a little bit yesterday on that. I know Phil and we're trying to get the nine hundred East project cleared out to fifty-eight. And that required getting through Odin, so then whenever Odin decided to use their, get federal funding for that, they really didn't know the process of getting through that federal funding. So Phil said the highway department would help them navigate that. So I think that's what, I think we still should probably have that in place. But if we're gonna be investing money in it too, I think the highway department needs to be involved in all the way through.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, you guys have the skill sets. I mean, the town, this, the towns and even probably the city, to manage a federal project is fairly complex. So I definitely think we need a spirit of it.
Hey, well, Laura Phillipi, she's here, but she's, I think she, you're the main one working with Odin, aren't you? So she's working with Odin and provided us with the cash flow estimate over the next four years. So we know what our portion would be to them. I didn't want to get to four years and they tell us we need to send them a check for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was what we was committed to the project. So I think that they bill us monthly and we pay our percentage monthly over the next four years.
I think that's good, if we can talk in a more, in more depth at the next highway meeting, just to see what the best way to do it is.
Okay, and then the, the next project would be the the ODS fifty relinquishment that we took over. I think we'll be, we got some numbers together. Laura, give me some more numbers today. And she's gonna schedule a meeting with everybody, set up a meeting so we can discuss applying for a grant or more, multiple grants.
More than one grant, right?
More, more than one grant. Probably December, I think, is at the deadline.
Okay.
So that's all I've got.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right, next up, we have the Samaritan Center and Brock and Rob, morning, gentlemen.
Morning. Morning. How you doing?
I met with Brock and Rob maybe a few months ago. They gave me kind of a high-level synopsis of what, what they're going to be doing. And they want to come and talk to the tire board, so welcome.
Yeah, good morning.
Morning.
My name is Rob McClain. I'm the CEO of Good Samaritan Hospital. And I brought with me today somebody introduced to you, which is Brock Low, who's gonna be Chief Operating Officer for the Family Health Center. And over the past two decades, we've had the honor, Good Sam has, of being able to provide behavioral health services to not only Washington, but to Davies County through the Samaritan Center, next to Dr. Cullen's office. And over the last three years, we've been working in creating what is called a federal qualified health center, FQHC. And we, we were finally able to get that accomplished over the course of the last year and have worked then closely with Jennifer Emmons, who is the president of the FQHC, called Family Health Center. And then Brock came aboard. Brock actually started as our interim executive director for behavioral health and has done a great job of pulling everything together and getting this moved over. The, the, the reality of the move is, it's, it's more a change in the sign than changing any processes or changing any services. And the reality is that FQHC is so substantially greater in reimbursement than what hospitals were generating off of patients through the behavioral health side, that it made all the sense in the world to try to move toward this. Provides the opportunity to be able to expand and grow even further and provide things that the hospital would never have been able to do. So I'm, I'm really excited for the program. I'm excited for Brock in his new role. He's done a lot of work at the state level to get to this point. So I will step aside and let him do some talking and introduce himself and talk a little bit about what we're gonna do.
My name's Brock. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of the Family Health Center. And that's probably our key message today, is that the former Samaritan Center is now the Good Samaritan Family Health Center, which will, our DBA is Family Health Center. So you'll see the new signage up. We actually made that transition as of July first. The Samaritan Center's been around for over fifty years, particularly in this county for for decades. And it's about myself and probably a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy of my colleagues transitioned from under the umbrella of the Good Samaritan Hospital out to the Family Health Center. And so we probably have about twenty-five or thirty of those staff members in this county in our building over on State Street. We, we provide behavioral health services predominantly. Therapy, medication management, we have nurse practitioners and psychiatrists. We provide crisis services, skills training. We work with the criminal justice system, the jail population, substance use disorder. We, we, we serve people suffering from severe mental illness, schizophrenia, depression, bipolar disorder. And as, we also are getting into the schools in this county, Washington Community School, as well as North Davies. So unfortunately, the need for behavioral health services has, has grown over the last couple of years. But also, the, the stigma has, has declined. And the services have, have been able to grow as well. We, we think there's a need in this county and we hope to to continue to grow. That was a piece, as Rob mentioned, for the transition, was to to be able to continue to grow and, and provide services to this county. So we have a, actually advisory council meeting tonight with your, your all, your appointment. Mr. Arnold sits on our, on our council. So those are our quarterly meetings, and we try to rotate. As a community health center, we serve four counties, Knox County, Pike County, Martin County, and of course Davies County. And so we try to rotate every quarter to have a, a meeting in each one of our counties. And we, we have our meeting tonight here in Davies. So wanted to come today, though, just to, to let you all know that the transition has, has gone well. You know, we look forward to continue to serve this county and grow. And we really think this will be a very positive thing that will help us provide services for generations to come. Provide the opportunity to ask any questions or try to answer any, if there's any rumors or anything.
I'd just say the challenges that the organization went through with COVID and not only the treatment side, but the staffing side, and what's been done. This is an opportunity and again, more funding. But I think there's certainly a need for that now. So far, they, in my opinion, have done a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We're excited. We've got a couple of things. The hospital will retain its inpatient behavioral health, which is called the La Sal unit, can't speak. And then secondly, we still continue to have our own residency program that incorporates both internal medicine and psych. And the psych program is right now, as Brock mentioned, psych program is entered into an agreement with the Davies County Jail to actually bring our residents over and work with some of the inmates. So we're really excited about continuing that process and, and moving toward more and more behavioral health in the communities that we serve, because it's, it's much needed. Absolutely.
Sounds good. I don't have any questions.
I have any questions.
Yeah, thank you for the update.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, next up, we got the West Boggs update. Nathan. Morning, Nathan.
Morning, Nathan.
Good morning, guys. My name is Nathan Rem. I'm the superintendent at West Boggs Park. Very happy to be here today and that there's some interest in the lake. There seems to be a lot of interest in the community lately, given that we had our study done last year. West Boggs Lake is a six-hundred-and-twenty-two acre reservoir. It's located near Lagodi. It's an important source of recreation, wildlife habitat, and contributes around ten million dollars annually to the local economy. So we're pretty important to the area for that reason, in addition to tourism. We have a heavily farmed watershed around the lake. And what that means is there's about eighty-three hundred acres that drain into West Boggs. Many of those areas are pulling in a lot of sediment and nutrients as the rain comes down on those empty fields and pulls it into the lake. There's, you know, different kinds of fertilizer that are being applied. In addition to that, a lot of the farmers aren't grassing their ditches and waterways, which doesn't allow any filtration as that sediment runs in. So since nineteen seventy-two, when the lake was formed, we've been getting a lot of different nutrients that are coming in, most notably phosphorus. So we just had a sediment study done, and there's about twenty-four thousand pounds of phosphorus in the lake and then two hundred and forty thousand pounds of what's called legacy phosphorus, and that's tied up in the sediment. And what that does is causes algae to bloom. So the algae will feed on that phosphorus and then cause harmful blooms, which then in turn close the lake. So as most of you know, the lake was closed last year around Fourth of July. So the lake health is actually really poor. You guys noticed that little graph I gave you there? That illustrates it pretty easily. I pulled that out of the hundred-page study just to illustrate that. So what that shows, that yellow line that you're seeing there is the baseline for a healthy lake, and those bars are what our lake looks like. So those are all individual testing sites. And for those of you who can't see, the phosphorus is about thirteen times what it should be. So a lot of our people that are testing, it's the worst lake they've ever seen. So this year, to be honest, the lake health is very poor, but the symptoms are mild. We just had Aquatic Control do a test for us on June twenty-ninth. That was our last test. We can only afford to do about a hundred acres of treatment on the lake a year. So we do usually three treatments. The lake itself is over six hundred, so that's only one-sixth of the lake, so we really can't afford to treat the whole lake. But right now, Mother Nature's been cooperating with us. We haven't had a lot of rainfall to push those nutrients in, and it's been pretty cool. So the highest testing site had thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty cells per milliliter. Under a hundred thousand is still safe to swim. So we're, we're doing really great this year, which is awesome. It cost the park immensely to close the lake down last year on Fourth of July. So very happy that we can provide those services and recreation for those people. I do expect a change here pretty soon. You know, we're trying to get ahead of it. I've got people doing algaecide treatments. We got a special chemical going in this year. It seems to be helping quite a bit because it pulls some of the phosphorus out. But again, we just aren't, we don't really have the funding to combat all of it in the whole lake. And with the rains that we've had lately, unfortunately, I do believe that we'll have a bloom coming. It's just not here yet. So we are looking at some long-term solutions. So what we're starting with is looking at sources of funding. So we're trying to do a three-tiered approach. We're looking at education in the watershed. So I formed a water quality committee, which I gave you the list of there. So that's ten volunteers from around the community. We knew that we needed some good representation of the farmers in the watershed as that makes up a large, or a large percentage of the land usage there. So I made sure that we had some good Amish representation. And they've been really helpful as well in educating their community. It's a little harder for us as a park to reach into that community as, you know, we can't do the regular radio ads and so forth. So they've written hundreds of letters to their, their community and farmers. And we're seeing some real changes on some farms, which is awesome. People are grassing their ditches, they're pulling their cattle away from those ditches, kind of mitigating the manure going in. We're looking at different teaching material. I've sent out hundreds of those pamphlets. So those have been at a lot of our events, trade shows, things like that. We're passing that out to get people to understand what's going on. The sediment basins are also a very important approach for us. So I've been looking into that. We have two sediment basins that were built in nineteen ninety-four. And those are essentially just to catch sediment running into the lake. So we do have two. One of them is fourteen point six acres, and that's this one here. And this one is not quite full yet. So this one is very shallow. The deepest depth is about two feet. And that's what this looks like, so it's a very unhealthy-looking lake, very small. All the fish are dead. They were floating up in there this spring because it's so polluted. But they do a really great job of mitigating all of those nutrients coming into the lake. However, those are now full. So the small one is just a few feet deep, does a little bit of work. The large one is seventeen point five acres, and you can see from this aerial photo, it's full, completely full. There's a few streams that run through that, but as it rains, that. There's a few streams that run through that, but as it rains, that water just plows right through there and doesn't do its job at all. I can actually walk and drive equipment across this. So there's another picture of what it looks like. And this should look like the other one just as a lake. So we're looking into dredging that. I went up to Lake Lemon. That seemed like the most similar project that's going on close by. They do a couple of different dredging processes. They have large mechanical dredging. That is about $25 a cubic yard to dredge. And then they have hydraulic dredging, which essentially takes a pipe and they have an attachment head and they suck it up through the bottom, pump it up through a pipe, and then put it in a large holding tank. And all these guys out too. A large holding tank like this, and then the sediment settles out and then it runs back into the lake. So that's kind of what we're looking at doing there. We do have a sediment removal study being done now. The same person that did our water study was supposed to do a sediment removal plan. He was contractually obligated to do that. He kind of chose not to. I was able to kind of catch that that was going on and then we were able to get with layer and make sure that that's happening. So that'll really solve a lot of issues that the park has, but we don't quite have that information yet. But we do know that it's kind of that three-tiered approach of educating the watershed, dredging the basins, and then doing a chemical treatment on the phosphorus. So we do have a company identified for that as well. However, it's very expensive. They're estimating around $10 million. It will be several million dollars to dredge the basins too. I don't know the sediment depth in those, so I don't have the exact calculation yet, but we'll know that soon. But in order to fix the lake, that's really the long-term solution. So that chemical treatment would put a bunch of lanthanum in the lake, which will chemically bind up the phosphorus.
Lanthum?
Mm-hmm, correct. And that will chemically bind the phosphorus, hold it forever. And I can get you some additional information on that. We do have a long-term plan as well of forming a conservancy district. So this is nothing new. There's about 130 of those, 134, I believe, in just in Indiana alone. That would essentially be a tax on the watershed. So a small tax and that would allow us some funding to continue to, you know, do maintenance on the basins and have a long-term solution. The Indiana Conservancy Act provides a mechanism by which landowners through a circuit court process can organize a special taxing district or a local unit of government to solve a specific local issue related to water resource management. So again, there are 137 actually in the state. So we believe that that would probably be a long-term solution. Myself and the board don't really know of another way to generate funding for that. We do have a lake enhancement fund that was started in late 2019. So that's kind of what's paying for our chemical treatments now. So that pulls in $4 from each reservation, an annual pass. So this only takes in about 24,000 a year. So, you know, the cost of the seven figures that I suggested, it's not really going that far. You know, and our park stays pretty busy, but we don't have the funding to do this alone. So that's kind of where we're at now. I do believe that, you know, this year, we're going to be looking pretty good for the next month or so, but after that, we'll start to see those algal blooms. Wanted to mention to you guys too, we're interested in reaching out to Congress for an appropriation to kind of get us going. So definitely wanted to, you know, talk with you guys about that before we do that. Those are our long-term strategies at the moment. I think that our 10-person water quality committee is doing great. You know, we all have specific jobs that we're doing and really moving along. Trying to, right now, get the lines of the conservancy district figured out. So I think that we'll get all those residents together into a list and then send them some more information and then take a survey and see kind of where we're at. So we would need more than 50% of the vote for the freeholders in the watershed in order for that to pass. So we'll get a survey going, see how many people are interested, and then kind of go from there. But that would be kind of our long-term goal for the next year and a half. Do you guys have any questions or anything?
No, I mean, anything we can do to, you know, make that lake, you know, as great as it can be, you know, I'm fully supportive of it.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would also look to maybe some of the agriculture foundations from these big companies and see if there's any programs they might have that would assist you.
Okay, we will do that.
And do you know, is it more commercial fertilizer, real crop, or is it more manure from livestock?
It's more manure from livestock, is the bulk of it.
Is the bulk of the phosphorus?
Yes. Yeah, I would say significantly. Especially the landowners around the lake are very wary of what they're putting on their lawns now. I mean, I went out in late February and I could tell who was doing it and who's not, but it's, there's just a few. People around the lake are very mindful of it. But a lot of it's grassing ditches. If people would grass along the waterways, that would, that would be the biggest thing.
Filtration strips, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's very, very insightful. And, you know, now that we've got zoning, zoning was put in place to help mitigate problems and if they're not putting in their grass stripping and so forth, then we'll think all options are on the table, so.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Great. Next up, we've got the section corner perpetuation project, Sean Gabhart.
Morning, Sean. I've got together a contract with a local company, Landmark Surveying, to do 15 square miles of corners that is contiguous to the 40 square miles we've gotten done in the last three or four years. Yes, I'm sorry, Sean, I kind of have a commissioner to sign off on my contract. I'll be using funds out of my perpetuation fund that I have. I've got the money in there to do this. This contract is for $49,975, which will basically get me everything from south side of Boggs Lake down to half mile south of 50, from the Martin County line, five miles west. So we'll have 11 miles by five miles down on the eastern side of the county. It's in the biggest area of surveying and land transfers and property problems. I think I sent you guys one of these contracts through the auditor.
As far as the county, county goes, how many miles or what percentage of the county have we, are we complete on this?
Well, this is, we, we have two programs going. We've got one where the council allows $10,000 a year. We pay $2,000 or $200 a corner. So if you do a survey in the county and you establish a new corner, you reference it, turn into surveyor's office, we'll pay you $200. That's kind, I spent probably $2,000, $3,000 out of that last year. It's kind of filtering down because we're about 65% in the county on corners. So most time when I work in my private practice, most of the corners are in.
Okay.
But the eastern side of county, especially if you come south down through Reeve Township, down to the river, it's pretty vague. Steel Township, I'm probably, I'm gonna say I'm 85% fully in steel. But what I'm doing with this, with that, is a corner with three references. This program that I started five years ago, we do a large block and we do state plane coordinates on each coordinate. So any corner that gets milled out or tiled out or graded out, they can be put back easily. And you don't have to reinvent the wheel to put them back in. So Pike County, they're 90% complete. They've started this 20 years ago and their surveyor gets funds from seed it. So like that, he spends probably 60, 70, 80,000 a year. So I contract with them, I do perpetuation in their county for them. And it's, it's amazing thing, survey-wise, when you have to have a survey done and your section's already perpetuated, your cost is a lot smaller.
A lot smaller, yeah.
It's a good thing, this is a fine, this establishes them forever.
Good.
And Landmark does a great job on them.
Any questions?
I don't have any issue. I'm glad to get this project moving aboard.
And I put Michael's name on it just because he signed it the one.
Sounds good. No other questions? I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Next up, we've got David Gray, Next Level Firefighter Training.
All right, let me have that back for him one second. Still need a copy of there too, make sure you get a copy of that.
Thank you. Okay, I'm Dave Gray, Fire Chief of Washington Township. I'm here to, today to discuss a very good opportunity for all area career and volunteer firefighters. Presently, new firefighters have to, have to have close to 100 hours of training in firefighter one and two. And all skills testing should be done at a certified facility. Many urban communities have their own firefighter training towers, but rural departments have to travel to, to take that testing. There is a proposal by Governor Eric Hockem and State Fire Marshal Steve Jones is to expand the regional sites and fill the voids in the state. So travel will be around 30 miles for firefighters to go to their training. It's called hub and spoke. The training would bring trainer, training closer to firefighters across the state while also adding consistency to the training. The state investment for each training tower is approximately a half a million dollars. This is where Davies County comes in. According to the Department of Homeland Security MAP of training facilities, if they build a training site in Davies County and draw a 30-mile radius circle that encompasses five adjoining counties, Green, Knox, Dewboys, Martin, Pike, and of course Davies County. Much thought has went into evaluating a site including parking, restrooms, meeting room, easy access, adequate water supply, and an existing department that would own and manage the site. We feel that Washington Township Station 2 on 150 South has everything that is needed. We have a training facility there now that we use and it's been there for 15 years and it's, fire and police use that facility, but it's never been NFPA compliant, so we can't do live burns there. And we, so we can't test students there. We filled out an application for our site, had the State Fire Marshal come in and tour the site, and now are asking for the endorsement from our county leaders as we pursue this opportunity. This would be a great asset for area departments to use and train and better prepare them for that next incident. Thank you. And all I'm asking is, I came up with a document, would like for you to sign it, just stating that you're endorsing it. You have no, no money involved in it, so it's, it's a good thing. Questions? Gentlemen?
I don't have any questions. You guys, like I said, you already do training out there at that fire station anyhow, so I think it'd be a really good improvement out there and still be able to bring five other counties in there and help them train too. That would fill all the voids in the southwestern part of Indiana it looks like too. I don't have any problem with it.
Refresh my memory, I know, I think the property was donated by the foundation when you received that property out there.
Yes.
How much, do you have enough property to do what you need to do out there? I forget just how much we gave you.
According to the State Fire Marshal, the, the plan would just about take up the area that the existing building is on now. That building's going to be taken down. They're, they're shipping containers that are stacked and the new facility would be a lot like that, but there's, see, we have wood in those shipping containers that are there now. That's why we can't burn there. The new, you know, the new system is no wood. We can secure it. We have a lot of rodents coming in that bill, that facility now and it's, it's just not, it's not good.
But you do have enough room out there?
Yes.
To get any additional property, okay.
And that document, I don't know if that's something that you can, you know, just push through or...
Yeah, I mean, the only comments I shared with, with David, obviously, I'm, I'm all for having more enhanced training facilities. As I looked at the next 20, 30, 40 years of Davies County and the city of Washington, I mean, ideally, if we could take the conservation club and that current fire training center and move it somewhere else, because all that should be residential down through there over the next couple of decades. So to go and build something brand new there that's going to be engulfed by residents at some point, I just think is a little short-sighted. So that was the only pushback that I had with this, is that is there a better rural setting where, again, this is in a dream world, where we take the conservation club and, you know, kind of bind a training facility for the deputies and fire department and conservation club, more out into the rural settings? Would be, in my mind, the ideal, but a lot harder to figure that out.
Yeah. The, the facility they were built, can they be disassembled and moved, I wonder? Or is it, once they're built, they're built?
Well, I, I think so because it would be a lot like what we have now. Those shipping containers are just stacked on each other and then they're welded with a plate, but...
I mean, that'd be a concern. I don't know where the conservation club is. I agree that that, in a perfect world, should all be housed.
It should be somewhere else.
And, but you've got Jones and Sons out there, which I don't think they're going anywhere. Conservation Club, I don't know where their board's at, and even the old school building. Does Jerry Stahl still own that?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, we, we thought about the, the county highway property. One drawback, or two drawbacks, is that the, the water supply out there is not adequate. And you have to have a fire...
On that note though, wouldn't it be the same water supply that all of our volunteers have access to? I mean, when they go to a volunteer...
You gotta get ponds, you gotta get water.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, they're not going to be able to go plug into a hydrant when they go into any other township. So are we training the, with the right resources?
Well, that is a good point. Our supply out there, I believe, is a six-inch main. And we had planned on putting two hydrants back there. But then you also have to have a, a department that will kind of sponsor this. And I talked to Montgomery and they don't want to have to manage it. But, you know, that's just, that's their feeling on that, so.
The city of Washington, we managing?
Washington Township.
Washington Township.
Now, Washington City is on board. The mayor has, we've met with him and talked to him, because there is going to have to be a couple hydrants put back there and...
I mean, I'm just, again, I'm, I'm not against the project at all.
Yes.
But we're training these firemen, then they're going to be going throwing a hose in a pond and that's how they're going to be actually putting a fire out. They're not going to have a hydrant. But anyway, we can't fix everything in one fell swoop.
I understand.
But I do think 20-year visions of that area needs to be residential and, but we have to make whatever decision we can today though, so I'm not against the project. So if there's any other questions?
The only thought I would say, I mean, commissioners have letterhead when they, when they're asked for letters of recommendation sometimes will, so maybe you'll take that information and put it on your letterhead if that's what you're wanting to do.
So the deadline for these endorsement letters is Saturday. Is that something I can get before then?
If they want to prove it today, they can.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and sign this today.
Okay.
You can have this copy. I did doodle on it, sorry. Or somebody did, it's me or...
How about you put it on your letterhead, approve it, and then put it on your letterhead.
Okay. So are there any oppositions? So I entertain a motion to go ahead and approve signing the letter of support.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for the initiative.
Next up, we've got Paul Williams. Good morning, Paul.
Couple quick things. One is, we did put together, we finally got a date put together for the health fair, but we need your blessing to allow the employees to come on their time to attend the health fair. This year, we're going back to the park community building because we're not sure about the basement down here, if it's going to be utilized during, you know, this coming fall. if it's going to be utilized during, you know, this coming fall. So I just need, we've got a set for September 28th, which is a Thursday from 7:00 to 10:00. And we'll obviously get something out to all the employees, but we need your blessings to let the employees come and attend the health fair during the day.
Sounds good, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on that.
Yes, sub moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero.
The other quick thing is that, Nathan, you received, do you have the form that needs to be signed for the health reinsurance?
The reinsurance?
It's the health reinsurance.
I've got the organ transplant.
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about? Okay, yes, I've got that.
Okay, do you have any questions on that?
No.
Then there was a, there's four places you need to sign, do you have all?
I've got three. I'll look for that. I'll look for the fourth one here.
Okay. Do you have any questions on what they're asking you to sign, I guess is their only reason I'm here? It was approved at the last health insurance proposal, these are just the formal documents that the reinsurance carrier is requesting to have a signature on.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is all the same information as we've previously approved, so I'd entertain a motion to sign these.
Sub moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
While the reinsurance was looking through the final documents, in your SPD, the information that you hand out to the employees on the brochures, they noticed, if you look at this front page right here, okay, and there's bold lettering, and it says, "Your temporary absence," but the part that is in blue, it says, "As determined by the employer." You have a personnel handbook that addresses that question. The only thing we need to, and I've worked with Dale at MJ, and we've worked together on how we can get this to sit, where the reinsurance carrier is okay with this language, because it's vague by saying this leave is up to the, as determined by the employer. We're just going to add the word, that leave or up to as determined by the employer's handbook. It seems one word, but that one word, and so we've sent this to the reinsurance carriers. If we add that one word, and we sent them this handbook that I got from the auditor's office, thank you very much. And they said what's in the handbook is acceptable to them. So, I know, one word, you can approve, and I got to have approval to add to the SPD document as to determine by the employer handbook.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah. I'd entertain a motion to make that change.
Sub moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul, appreciate it.
Thanks, Paul, appreciate it.
Yeah, please. I looked at every page, I saw three, I'm sorry. Just give you this one. I might have saw three signature lines, there's one missing, you can check.
Make sure they get a copy over to the auditor's office.
Okay, we good? Okay, no worries. Thank you. Okay, next up, we've got the acronym, DCSW, CD, Soil Water Conservation District, that's right, of course.
Good morning, I am Megan Frederick, and I am from the Soil and Water Conservation District here in Washington. We are hoping to apply for a grant to get our education coordinator, this is Amber Stevens, our current education coordinator, on full-time. Our goal is to eventually get her on full-time with the county, but we wanted to try first to apply for a grant to, for the next three years, to cover her position, to get this going.
Yeah, sure.
So you guys should have a copy of the grant application, I believe?
Yeah.
And then I did submit a little bit of a salary and what our district can provide as far as funding, as far as match. So the grant cannot pay for benefits, holidays, or paid time off. So as far as my match, that would have to come from the benefits that would have to come from the county. So for, I have a breakdown, for 2024, we would ask the county just to pay their portion of what they would pay for part-time only. And then we, as the district, would pay the difference of the benefits package. So in 2024, the county would be paying zero extra dollars. And then in 2025, the district said that they could pay 10,000, and then the county paid the difference, and then the same for 2026, because I don't know what those exact numbers will be. For 2025 and 2026, obviously due to pay raises, insurance changes, I don't know how that'll go.
Sure. Well, I had the pleasure of meeting with the, we just left a solid waste board, you're not the solid waste board, but...
Soil and Water Board, there you go.
Soil and Water Board, and good meeting, very thorough, detailed meeting. And obviously, it's a subject matter that only a limited number of folks out there have, you know, you learn over time. And we've got a well-qualified individual, he's working part-time, that would be the easiest thing to do as far as just expanding those hours, and it's a costly thing to do, and we talked about that, so... You know, I guess these are always easy now, but then when the grants run out, it's so hard to come back and prove your case, and so...
Well, I guess, like, in the, at the end of, even at the two-and-a-half-year mark, we could come talk with you guys, give our spiel of what we've accomplished with the grant full-time. And if anything, too, there's always, we are applying, would apply for a Clean Water Indiana Grant. That is something that you, we can apply for every year, so if, down the road, if we need to, you know, if you still feel you're hesitant about it, we can try to apply for another grant at that time as well, so...
Well, it's the cost of benefits that are so extremely expensive, and we had $10,000 of salary, but then we had $30,000 of benefits. And it's just, but again, we don't want to penalize really solid part-time team members who deserve and need the benefits as well. So it's just the challenge, so I don't have any opposition to it, knowing what I know now. But it's something that we'll have to prove the necessity of it going forward, so...
I was going to say, yeah, I will have to understand, how do you measure whether it's successful or not? You'll come back and explain to us just what's been done and the impact, at the end of the day, it's the impact. There's lots of things that could be done that we could fund, but we don't need to be funded. So, but again, as a grant, I have no problem, but just keep in mind, how do you measure success?
Right, right.
And then we'll be approving the, our approval to move forward with the grant, but then any sort of additional county dollars would then have to...
Have to go through the council.
Through the council, yeah. Michael, any questions?
Well, so the current part-time position right now, is that so many hours a week?
Is 28 hours a week right now, but it's 1,155 hours a year, which breaks down to be 28 hours. I mean, given there's vacation times and stuff in there, but that's not paid or anything like that.
How's that position being funded now?
It's a 100% county, part-time.
I knew we had some county employees that already know how it was. I definitely would, in two, two-and-a-half years, like to have a...
Yeah, two and a half.
Yes, have a...
Have an update, maybe that guy back there, worry about it.
Yeah, his term ends next year. Fishes everything out, so it's two years.
Two years.
Yep.
I don't have any opposition right now either, so...
There's no other opposition, I'd entertain a motion to approve the support of the grant. A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, the low contract, how about, oh, Jamie is here. Good morning, Jamie, on the low contract, is there anything you need to update us on, on that, or? Or Jen, yeah.
Yeah, for Jen, yeah.
I think she's...
I think she's talked to all three commissioners, haven't she? I don't have any, you know, for those guys, for their efficiency to keep moving forward and be able to use a product that actually can be used on multiple different sites, you know, I think it's probably the best thing to do myself, but...
The only question I have is the product that we're replacing, how long have we been using that?
Four years.
The problems, are they just, are they recent problems, or have we had these problems for four years?
Certainly.
Okay. It's time to be done with it.
Yeah, I know, because even like, even our tax statements, our personal, my personal tax statements, they've, they're hard to read. Everything that you need to see in descriptions, really fine print, sometimes it's not on there. They've mixed up the actual addresses, where they've been, where the tax statement's been sent to.
Okay, sounds like we have a motion.
Sub moved, move forward a little.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion passes three-zero. All right, next up on the agenda, we've got the maintenance HVAC, Rodney, is Rodney here?
Scott's here.
Scott is here, oh, here goes Scott. I think this is the board?
Yeah, the control panel for the HVAC, they've been having fits with it, and I think it's time to get it replaced. Did Rodney ever get a, I asked him to reach out to see if the number was pretty close, it was between, I think, around $10,000, but probably between $10,000 and $12,000 was going to...
10, 12, yeah.
What is it going to be, Scott? Yeah, but it's going to be roughly $10,000 to $12,000, but Rodney's going to have to reach out and get another quote on it, but I'd like to go ahead and get it approved, so he can get it repaired and move forward with it, and use our county building monies, which from the county commissioners would be 43201 line item to pay that out of.
3201.
And that's on this building?
On this building.
And that was from the lightning strike, the cultural issue.
It's, we don't know exactly, but, yeah. We've had several brownouts and everything else in this building, and I think it's, all that electronics is hard on it.
Yeah.
I know we've had a lightning striker too here, and I know we talked about a surge protector, and, yeah, we checked into that as well, so...
Yeah, I mean, I think we definitely got to get that panel fixed, and I mean, I'd be okay moving forward up to $15,000 since we don't have the exact number out of the county building fund, so that gives him some flexibility, so I'd entertain that motion.
Sub moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. Next up, we've got the Westgate Authority appointment. We were contacted by one of the board members that serves on a volunteer basis, these folks put in so many hours, especially at the Westgate area, so Natalie Smith is asked to step down off that board. So I'd like to really thank her for all the time and energy she's put to that area up there. So, and then also to appoint Darren Holder to take her spot, so... If there's not any other discussion, I would entertain that motion.
Sub moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. Next up is the Davies Community Hospital appointments. The current Board of Governors has a nominating committee, and then they kind of slate the candidates and then submit them to the county for approval. Historically, we've always just kind of rubber-stamped their recommendations, but it is ultimately up to the commissioners on who we appoint there. So currently, the two appointments are Darren Steiner and Tony Showalter. So I'd entertain any discussion or concern? If not, I'd entertain a motion to reappoint those two.
You fine with that?
Yep.
Hey, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Sub moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion passes three-zero. Next up is just more of an FYI, the Visitors Commission and the Chamber have verbally agreed on a contract. They will be signing the contract, both of the boards, and they've both worked really well on getting the details, the measurements hammered out, so really hats off to both of those boards. So once both of those boards approve that, approve that contract, then it will come to the commissioners for final approval, so... Okay, courthouse renovation update, I see the team over there, hello, team.
So this morning, we wanted to give you an update on our progress on the design of the courthouse renovation. Today, we will be releasing a 50% complete construction document set that you'll be able to review, as well as Garnon will be able to take a look at that and verify their cost estimate with where we are in the construction documents. We have a few items that we wanted to kind of update you on the progress, as well as get some feedback from you on some decisions that need to be made. So the first page that you have, we wanted to talk about the site a little bit. We are in the process of gathering proposals for the survey. We know that we need some utility locates for the water line and pump that's on the northwest corner of the building, so we're getting, gathering some proposals for that information. One item that, I think Scott, maybe you mentioned in your list of items that you'd like to see renovated is the concrete tile around the monument and the south entry. And so we've kind of taken a look at this, you can look at, see some of the photographs. In looking at this, we feel like the damage of the concrete tile is primarily around the monument itself. And one item, one proposal that we have was the idea of replacing the concrete around the monument, and then just, you know, power washing the remainder and replacing the sealant. So you can see the photograph and the... So you can see the, the photograph in the lower right-hand corner, there's kind of a dashed line. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be kind of the line of demarcation between the new pavers around the monument, what would remain, and just get power washed and, and some new sealant applied. So for, for us, we were looking, we feel like this may, this would probably be the, a cost-effective strategy in terms of being able to deal with some of the, some of the cracking that you've got around the, the pavers and the tiles. And I don't know where you are with the cost estimate on this item, if you have any.
Haven't put one together on that, we do have it listed as alternate five, so all of the site, about five different site-related items that we will have is just.
Okay, this monument out front, is this still under that covenant from DNR or not?
I didn't know it was under the covenant.
That's why I didn't know if the bill, I don't know, I didn't know where that covenant left off of.
Are you talking about the same one that covers?
Covers the courthouse.
So I am, I would assume by conversations, we would have to run it by her, but I don't think, just, just based on conversations I've had with her on the rest of the building, I don't think she would be against it. But yeah, I think it would have to run by her.
Tenure thing, that's, it's been.
Rather than tear it out, do you have an opinion on coatings?
Yeah, we're seven.
Concrete coatings, they've done phenomenal things with coatings these days.
That's why I was wondering if there's a different substrate to use here, or whatever, I mean, do we have to go back with the concrete tile, like it's built in there, pavers, or overlays, or something different?
Yeah, the, the reason that we, well, when you do an overlay, you do have to start looking at the grades and how that impacts the basic grades and drainage, et cetera. We, we felt like the, rather than, we looked at, we looked at a few alternatives. One was, hey, could we, should we just take the concrete tile out and replace it with sod, you know, for some of these areas, because you're no longer using that south entry, you know, as the main entry to the building, it's really just going to become an egress. But even that would be, I believe, would be more expensive than just power washing and, and, you know, because you've, once you pull it out now, you've got your drainage layer and you've got to replace that. Correct me if I'm wrong, because you're the, you're the costest of it.
Are we, are we still talking from this dotted line south?
Yeah, we're just talking about around the monument, not the whole thing.
Well, yeah, that's, that's kind of the, where we landed with this, we thought this may be a cost-effective way of dealing with some of the damaged pavers that you have, which we, you know, the bulk of it is around that monument, so we thought this may be a good way to do it, so that you're, you're not replacing everything, you're just replacing that around, around the monument itself.
That's why I was saying, either we can use just pavers, or go ahead and put the concrete back, or even back to sod, but you think that would still be more expensive than just replacing the concrete tiles around, around the monument, where you get the dotted line south?
Putting concrete or sod back in there instead of with the tiles?
Yeah.
I mean, sodding it is gonna be your most effective approach, I don't know if we're, you know, we'll want to talk to their civil engineers, my opinion would be, I don't know if we want to put the, uh, concrete in and start impacting, this is a pervious system.
Yeah, yeah.
So, minute we start putting concrete, you know, water's going somewhere, there's a reason, obviously, from a civil perspective, the designer, you've put tiles and pavers in there anyways to keep water away from the building and moving, to maintain that pervious. I, I don't want to recommend putting concrete in there, and I, you know, I'm gonna defer to the civil engineer, RKW on that opinion. But we can look at multiple approaches and go with what, what is the most cost-effective, but if we're gonna clean it and reseal it, I think your dotted line is more driven to, towards, that's where all the cracks are.
The damage there in the south end.
Just the years of freeze thaw from, you know, a resting monument, you know, that concrete is, or the pavers are stripped in with the perimeter of the monument. So as they're moving, they're gonna bind and crack, and if you are replacing them, it's gonna need a good jointed system with some expansion, and they have the ability to move more than it is now.
First of all, prior to 2013, no. Butter coming down from the building around the monument. I don't know, basically, concrete pads, approximately six foot. And their, water was getting under the entire front end, flushing the mud out, and the concrete has settled, and that's what created it. Walls we put up and the new landscape. Problem, but.
Problem on the top, yeah. I remember you, all that stuff running out there in front, across the sidewalk and everything.
And I think you've got this listed as an alternate in the bid right now.
Yeah.
Um, we, we're just looking for a little bit more direction on what that alternate would be.
I think we definitely need to keep it as an alternate bid, it doesn't need to be repaired in time, whether we do it with this project now or later on. That's to be seen, I guess, if we have to figure out the cost of the building's gonna be, where we're, where we're at with our, our budget.
Well, that's the good thing about this project, we're spending, we're spending a lot of money on it, however, the outside of it is going to look fairly the same.
Same, yeah.
Right.
So it's not like you're gonna have this glaringly terrible concrete sidewalk, that's going to really stand out, because everything else is gonna look the same, so.
Yeah.
If we can fix it at the same time, great, I'm not an optimist, I think, in this case, I mean, I think we're gonna be squeezing every dollar we can from inside. And this could be a future commissioner's issue that they may have to address, but if we could do an alternate, alternate with, you know, whatever recommendation you guys have.
I think we, as long as we get an alternate bid and know where we're at, then we know our budget with the courthouse, where we stand with that, once we go out for bid on it, we'll know whether we can get it afforded or not. And like you said, I mean, this could be a project two or three years down the road with the commissioner's budget for their building, their building fund to repair out of the commissioner's budget in the future.
Could be the future Don Spillman Pavilion, sponsors it.
Yeah. Uh, we want to take care of it, but you know, funds are getting tight for the projects we're trying to do, so, I mean, I'd like to see all those done at the same time, but then, we gotta, we gotta, yeah.
Yeah, and, and it will still remain as an alternate, we, we just needed a little bit more direction on, you know, what the best, you know, we, we've looked at it, we had a recommendation, we just wanted to get some feedback from you guys.
Sounds good.
Okay. The, so, as, let's move into the inside of the building. So, we are in the process of obtaining a, two proposals from two firms that do, do furniture procurement. And both of the firms are able to, well, they both work with Marion County Courthouse, so we know that they can do a really large project. And then they can do the cooperative purchasing program if you elect to do that, if not, they can, they can just do a regular procurement program. So, we should have those next week, and we'll pass those along to you, I just wanted to give you an, an update of that. Also, you know, I, I know there was some discussion about, hey, can we, if we don't have our furniture exactly picked out, are we gonna know for sure that the, you know, the electrical outlets, outlets that go to that workstation are gonna be in the exact right place? And, you know, we know workstations are different depending on which one that you buy, but we'll, what we'll do is, we'll have our power supply and conduit, et cetera. We know what the general layout is of those workstations where each one will be placed. When the workstation is selected, then we'll be able to kind of hone in on what, where exactly that specific connection is, and we're gonna be as close as possible, you know, that we, we can be. We'll, we'll be able to, in other words, we'll be able to work with getting the project bid, and then having the furniture kind of follow up.
Yeah, and all best lead plans is still, has a miss every once in a while, I know even up in the auditor's office of this building, we tried really hard to get the receptacles everywhere they needed to be, but then, the way the cubicles were built, they had a back wall, so then it covered up the ones that, the receptacles on the wall. It just, you fight everything.
Yeah, yeah, well, so, so, you know, part of it is making sure that we get, we have enough information there that you can get a good bid from a sub, good number, good qualified number.
I guess it just, is it more down to the actual location of it, or just make sure you get the bids in for all, every receptacle that's in the, in the specs, right?
Yeah. The good thing we have here is, it looks like the design we have right now is, all the furniture is more of a honeycomb modular shape.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have a stub up through the floor in those locations, and if you have a seat, obviously you're gonna have an outlet, you're probably a dual duplex that's in there, and data drops. So, there's gonna be a raceway there that gets to that, and as furniture design progresses, we're gonna have that, it's gonna be in the design doc, that, that's gotta move or shuffle, you know, off of that center point. Furniture person's gonna take it from beyond there, so there's very few instances where along the wall.
Yeah.
So, so the floors are gonna be raised, is that what you said?
No.
Or, or you said stub up through the floor?
That, that power would be in the floor, like a floor boxer, like right here, for that center area.
Yeah, okay, well, good, one thing that we did that wasn't terribly expensive when we built our headquarters is, we have those on the floor, but then we have, like, under Don, there's a spool of wire, and then over here, and then over here, we went ahead and just had them run a cord there, dead cord. And, but we know where they're at, in case we ever need to go and grab it, so there's some, a few extras in the floor, but we have a raised floor though, so you may not be able to do it. This gives a little bit more flexibility down the road, if you remember where you're at.
Thing, yeah.
Yeah, that's the beauty of a raised floor as well, right? Maximum flexibility. Okay, so, we also wanted to talk a little bit today about the temporary move, and if you look at the second page, the document that I distributed, the first thing that I know Lara, you and some other team members did is to, well, I'll, I'll let you talk about it here in a minute, but, but essentially, we were looking, assessing this building, making sure we had the right accurate dimensions, and then looked at, you know, what, what it would look like if all departments were, would move in here. And I'll, I'll kind of let you talk through that a little bit.
So, as priority, we were using this basement, and, and that was going to be our main focus point, how many departments can we get in this building first off, before we start considering renting any other locations? So this particular plan, the first page shows the basement of this building, we're showing that we can technically fit all the departments in the basement that are necessary. We're showing that each judge gets an office that's already built, and then the other ones at this point would be open workstations. How we're balancing that is, we're showing some other spaces on other floors that could be private meeting spaces when they need the more private area. We're showing that from a space planning ass point, you know, aspect, this works, we talked to the sheriff on a security idea, you know, are, are you okay with this from a security standpoint? If probation and prosecutor, for instance, are in the basement next to the court functions, he seemed okay with that from a security standpoint. We mentioned, you know, mentioning, leaving a deputy up here as well as in the basement to kind of try to balance that safety aspect of it. This plan would also utilize, if you go to the next floor, this room as a courtroom, so the workstations would be in the basement, this would be a courtroom. We talked about possibly using even this conference room as a hearing room for your referee, so that could be just a hearing space as well. You would have the flexibility, given that we'll have deputies here to be able to use that other entrance into that room, from a security standpoint, they could use that entrance there, as to not affect this court as it was going on. Our next thought would be that they, you could do, you know, one of two things, this could be either a shared courtroom space between the two main courts, and then have that as a hearing room, if that works with their court load. If not, our alternate plan would be able to use the training room in the jail for that second court space. So that would be kind of our backup plan, the sheriff also offered up a interview, a small interview space over there that could be used as a meeting room if needed to. Or potentially, if there was issues with, if one judge wanted an office over there, so to be right next to the court, that would be possible as well with that meeting space. We have not talked to the departments about this plan, so this is kind of just a first glance of, you know, first look, first approach, what can we do with what the, the building we have right now? That would be our first gut instinct. Now, if you look at the third floor, we then identified a couple more conference rooms, meeting spaces, that's what I was going to when I said that the departments could share these meeting spaces, if they need that private meeting area. So I, I could picture that as being a scheduled item that maybe you can do electronically or whatnot, that all the departments could potentially share these few meeting spaces. Also identified the mapping room as potentially a second hearing area, you could set it up similar to that conference room, as, maybe use it as another small court area that wouldn't necessarily have to have a full gallery, full setup. There's a lot of, you know, cases that can be held in a smaller area, so that would be another option. Again, this plan does identify the basement as being open workstation, so we're not looking at building a whole bunch of walls, when you start building walls, you're gonna have to change your MEP.
I would prefer not to, least expense as possible.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna be, this is gonna be uncomfortable for at least a year, I understand that, but you know, we got a ton of dollars to spend over there, I don't want to spend the money, build out a space here.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for a year plus, I mean, obviously, attitudes probably change over time, but I mean, I, I remember having conversations that, yeah, we're gonna be working off card tables. Bring our chairs over, we'll have card table, table set up, and that's gonna be our desk, I mean, we've done it in the private sector, some of the department heads, you know, have made those type of comments, and we definitely would give them as good of resources as, as we can, but it's not gonna be.
It's gonna be sparing.
You're very correct, and I, I think from this plan, the extent of costs we're spending is really gonna be driven down to make sure people have data drops, electrical drops, and functionality connectivity. Walls and very few things that are from a bricks and sticks side of it, but yes, it's very interim. Segueing that into schedule, then, a couple things that's important to note in here that looks at space planning, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lara, you don't really have election space in this plan. So, our plan would be from a schedule, is we go out to bid in the September, October timeframe, those first few weeks and months are really gonna be related towards prepping the space for the move.
Right.
With electric drops and that, so if you'll see any 2023 election cycles still happening and not moving until after an election, would want to prep somewhere then, internally, how we handle a 2024 election, whether that's utilizing this room, though it's gonna be busy with, you know, courts and other commissions and council meetings, and that, that would need to be discussed in kind of a, a plan, you know, there is those shared kind of meeting room spaces that could handle that, so. There's not a defined space for that, and/or storage, correct?
So that'd be the early voting in April, in the May primary, or just the May primary?
I guess, I don't know, I don't know familiar with your.
Would early voting still happen, kind of like normal, they'd come up? But they'd come down to your temporary space, and it'd just come down to your temporary space theoretically, if there's room, and do the early voting there?
Privacy.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll.
Sure, so that is a 24.
Does that have to be?
My point is, is we plan, look into this in the next few months, as we get prepared for construction documents and stuff, it might be an interim, or another location or something we look at for that, or, because I, I get it, we're kind of sardining into the basement and utilizing some shared spaces.
Right, yeah. One thing I did, that walkthrough I done with Lara and DNR the other day, and wrong was with us too that day, is there is a ton of cubicles still left in that building over there on that little floor. And I don't, you know, I don't wanna make use of every bit of furniture we've got before we purchase anything for this temporary move.
Yeah. I think the department heads are bought into that. I mean, we'll, we'll give them what they need, and it'll be, it'll just like camping out for a year.
Open concept, right? Everyone's open concept. It'll be open concept in the basement.
Okay.
So let's, let's talk next steps then. Um, I, I think one of the things that we would like to do then is to roll this out to the departments and have discussions with each department, each court, to make sure that we're accounting for all of their needs. Um, and so that's, I think that's the next step for us. Um, and then we, we can report back, uh, make any revisions that we need to. And go from there.
And I think we would authorize, you know, to use the remote hybrid schedule to their maximum flexibility, and, you know, they probably can now, and, and, uh, we call them like hotel stations at TruScript, where, you know, we have four people that share the same station on a certain day of the week, and another one comes in.
Yeah.
So, okay. I'm surprised it will off that, that's, that's good news.
Really good news.
And I will say that was with, uh, the prosecutor planning on doing a lot of working from home. So those were, his, his station in particular, I think, were limited to how many workstations he was using, so. I know he at least has considered that. Um, I haven't got to talk to all the departments about the possibility of doing that.
Good.
All right, so we'll, we'll roll this out with the departments. Um, some other things on the inside of the building. Um, one thing is that, you know, the stair that's now used for maintenance can continue to be used for maintenance. I know the fire marshal has approved that, so we, we're not required to get a variance or anything on that, so that was good news. Um, the roof, we have requested a core sample on that roof, so that we really understand what the makeup is of it, because we cannot find any documents. Um, we do have a warranty, I believe, from the, the manufacturer installer, I'm not sure which, um, on the current roof, but we, it, it really is a, something that's applied over existing.
Yeah, I know there's something up there. I don't know what it is either.
Yeah. So that's, I, I don't know where we are with, with that.
I talked to Laura's, Lara, this morning.
Okay.
We'll go through, I get, we're just gonna have to reach out to a referrer that cuts a core for you and gets it in for patching.
Okay. We won't put it at a low spot, so it drains to it. We'll keep it high, we'll keep it at a high location. Um, asbestos, I, I don't know what we're.
We have a, uh, we have a proposal. We're getting a SCOT this week to look at a time next week for a lead environmental to, um, come out. They're gonna want, pretty well, pig in everywhere, and they're gonna collect and take some samples.
Sample, yeah.
And, you know, about a few pieces of plaster that might be ideal. In that time, if you have some areas that you feel are areas that can be, walk through, expedite that walk through. So, and then we're, we're gonna pay for that out of our pre-construction cost. We were looking at that, not to exceed cost, we can fund that.
For an inspection and for inspection.
For the, the, yeah, the initial survey, just a little grant and, uh, studying and all the testing, so we'll, we'll account for that in our pre-construction cost.
Okay, um, we, I just wanted to, to, this is really just to confirm or verify with you. Our intention is to, uh, do a proprietary spec on the Manco windows that have been approved by DNR. Um, because we know that they've approved of them. Um, we know that if we go with something different, we'll need to go through the entire approval process again. So that is our intention. Now, the, you know, and Jeremy, you can speak to this as well, but the, the installer of the windows, that will be a, a bid item, you know, whoever wins that bid. So that's different than the actual manufacturer of the windows.
I know there's a couple emails going back and forth between Manco and Conair, which these are all Conair windows here. Um, is there a preference between, is there, is, is there a reason not to use one over the other, or is there a preference?
Um, I, I mean, I can just speak to why we picked Manco.
Well, I'll speak why we, why, I'll speak why we picked Manco up there, because this building here, these, when these windows were ordered, they weren't ordered right through the, through the, uh, installer, right? And then we had trouble all the way through the process. Then we asked for Conair, because we couldn't get anything back from the installer, so we reached out to Conair, and Conair blew us off completely. And we was six months trying to get somebody to repair these windows, and the only person that would repair, would come down here and even look at them was Delaware Glass. I was done with Conair completely. That's the reason why we was looking at the windows prior three years ago to that courthouse. We chose a different manufacturer of the window. That's, that's the long and short of it.
So if we, so, that's when we went to the Manco, we got it approved through state. So if we, at this point, we, or I guess, three years ago, we did have a Conair option that was comparable. Uh, but we would still have to go through a state approval process if we were to switch that. So what that would probably entail, my best guess would be to do another mock-up, uh, to get DNR back to approve it. Um, so there would be a little bit of back and forth that would delay the process. So we just wanna make sure, you know, are we sticking with the Manco? Do we wanna consider a Conair and go through the DNR process again?
That's up to you guys. At, at the time, that's the reason we chose Manco. Cause Conair is, they wouldn't, they wouldn't help us out on this building at all, zero. And they wouldn't even, they wouldn't even entertain coming down and looking at the, looking at the windows, the problems we had at the time. And I didn't wanna have a manufacturer on that building, or if we had trouble, blow us off again the second time in a row.
Yeah, so my opinion is from a construction side, and then a future procurement perspective, I'm fine with doing a sole proprietor, a sole proprietor spec for Manco as a base. Um, I did receive this morning, I just, my, my concern is, is limited participation. Um, cause I've already got feedback that, you know, there's certain local vendors that don't want to work with Manco, and that choose not to. Um, that's their choice. I can't, you know, we can't force their hand to work with a specific manufacturer, I get that. Um, so we are limiting now that pool of competition. So what I would suggest, that, uh, we had a local, one of those local subcontractors we've been reaching out to. He has sent us some literature. I actually just saw on my phone this morning finally, on some alternative choices or options. So I'll look at that, if anything, we have that as a basis of, basis of, uh, design in the base bid, and maybe we create an alternate for an alternate manufacturer. That way, if that's maybe in a general trades package, that bidder has the opportunity, they can look at that Manco in your base bid. Then we have, we can retain a competitive market, and we look at having another option that solicits something else. Then, I guess we could have that window or that opportunity, where we table or accept that alternate. And if that, if the dollars are right, we can then go through the due diligence to see if that is an option, and expend those efforts to get it approved.
With DNR, that's a good idea.
So, I mean, three years ago, when we was looking at these, looking at the windows over there, Conair and Manco was like the only two choices that really had anything that would resemble that window, but you think there's more options on the table now?
There's more options, is, are there options that DNR is going to approve?
Right. And then, back then, there was basically two choices, Conair or Manco.
I mean, there's a lot more glass companies out there than most.
So with the DNR, I mean, we're, are we only, we're talking about the $50,000 covenant and it's $13 million project. I'd, I'd get off, I'd get three, four, five options. DNR approved, non-DNR approved, and for $50,000, to me, that's not rate limiting. I mean, if we got a window that's so much superior, but it's not DNR approved, and we have to pay back $50,000, that is a much better window.
Your cost deltas between all of them are probably within that range or even lesser than that. My worry is, is then if we see something sole spec.
Right.
That person knows they're the only one participating. I don't, I wanna, I wanna retain competitive.
I'd like to have at least three to five responses back, so, and then we can just know that these are non-DNR approved, so it's gonna be a $50,000 upgrade perhaps, or? I don't wanna just go and get two specs.
I don't know, I mean, I'm hoping, you know, we can buy out that covenant, but I don't know if that's.
I mean, it's not, I mean, it's a rounding error on a $13 million project.
It is. At that point, I mean, that's exactly, I've, I've said the same thing. If, if we couldn't work with them, had to buy the covenant back out.
And maybe we know a few, few, few folks up there who maybe oughta twist some arms, so.
Well, but I think it's up to him to flush it out and then come back to us. I just don't wanna get stuck in the position we was on this building, again, with a manufacturer. That wouldn't help us out at all. Zero response from them.
I'd say you flush it out, make a recommendation, and we can approve or disapprove at that time.
We let RQAW design it with the Manco as the basis of design. It's what's approved with DNR. It is a, it's a very high quality, great window. I am just more concerned that.
Certainly, yeah.
Linton Glass, I think, works with them. Iceover and Jasper doesn't, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then beyond that, I'm really going out of town from a bid market.
Yeah.
Home from Evansville, Bloomington, after that, so.
I mean, I'm def- I'm okay in Bloomington, Evansville, man, it's still close enough. I mean, I, I don't want two options, and then it's, you know, I'd, I'd like to have.
Well, I want two options. I wa- I just don't want one.
I mean, two options, two bids for one window as well.
Yes, yep.
Yeah. I want, you know, five options for a couple of different varieties.
Okay.
All right.
Um, another point, uh, that we wanted to discuss, uh, you'll see that I have a comparison of kind of the demo plan for the first floor restroom versus what we're proposing. I know there was conversations on, um.
Second page from the back.
Yeah. I know there was a conversation brought up about, you know, do we wanna fully renovate this? How, to what extent do we want to renovate it? Um, I, I just wanted to have a conversation to get more direction on that. Um, I guess my biggest question is, you know, what's the problem we're trying to solve? And if the problem we're trying to solve is getting rid of that sliding door, and making it, you know, more ADA friendly, if you will, outside of the sliding door, um, I think what we've come up with is the best route for that. Um, if we're just looking more of a finishes, you know, or something like that, that's a completely different conversation, and we can keep with what we, what you have now. Um, but I don't see a simpler layout. We've ran through several different layouts, and this was the, the cleanest option that we've come up with. Um, I do realize that this wasn't originally included, so, you know, it wasn't in the original budget. Um, I think it's been added
It is.
to this new one. So I just want a direction on if we wanna continue down this road, you wanna keep it with the full renovation? Or do we wanna leave it as is, or somewhere in between?
So is the, the diagram on top is the current layout?
That's the current layout.
Yeah.
So we got that pocket door up there on the women's bathroom. Right there, yeah. Now, at the time, that was what the, what the ADA grant that we chose to get that bathroom the way it was, but it was never intended to leave, like, leave it that way long-term. Cause we knew it was gonna remodel the courthouse one of these days, and that was when it was supposed to be a remodel with the courthouse to get the bathrooms exactly right. I like the layout of the second one, but the cost, I don't know what the cost is, but.
Yeah, I mean, it totally, I mean, again, it's, at some point, we gotta move forward, but to totally flip the bathrooms around, I mean, to me, it seems like that'd be the most expensive option, cause you're rebuilding two bathrooms from scratch, basically. And the current bathrooms have been remodeled, we're just trying to get rid of that pocket door.
Well, they've not been remodeled, they've just been, the pocket, so the, uh, entrance over here, the men's bathroom, we took the door off and left it wide open. We extended this wall here for privacy, so it's an open concept walking in the men's bathroom. And to get the ADA, so we, we couldn't get a wheelchair through this door and into the women's bathroom.
Okay.
So they created a pocket door here, just to, for temporary use, get ADA accessibility.
It may just seem like bathrooms and kitchens are, are the most expensive parts of your house.
I mean, they are.
Can we not?
We've, we've created a breakout, as we've looked at going from the schematic budget to this current budget. Um, I mean, it, it's significant.
Can we not go through the brick wall like he suggested, and absorb that whole?
Suggesting going through that conference room? I mean, where would you go through the brick wall, I guess?
Through the turn entrance.
Yeah, we're never.
Turn right into the hallway, and then turn left into that, through that brick wall.
And then you're saying the women's, then keep that entrance, and then they gain more space.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Not really.
Yeah, I'm kinda liking that idea.
What do you mean by bringing the stalls up to date? What are your?
Marble, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you're wanting to get rid of?
Well, just like the, I don't know, the partitions or whatever.
Right, so you're wanting to get rid of the marble and go to something different? They were okay with getting rid of the marble.
That'd be marble, maybe marble pieces for other places in the renovation.
Yeah, that's what we talked to them about.
That's.
Scott's got more marble down there at the Ohio Garage.
We, oh yeah, we are looking at putting the existing marble in some of the public restrooms on the upper floors. On the walls was kind of our conversation, so we wanted to get measurements of all those. Um, I'm a little concerned about.
What's this wall placement? Get a door in here and get the clearance.
Scott, did they, did they go down and measure what you had and, and overstocked too? That's all you got left?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that's probably a problem is have enough within that corridor.
So maybe.
We'll, we'll take a look at it. We're a little concerned that there's not enough
Okay.
within the corridor to get the, the required
Right.
dimensions of the.
Just see from a high level, if you think it's possible. To me, to me, I'm looking at a hundred thousand dollar remodel here, just in my pharmacy math here.
It's pointing up, Jeremy's pointing up. Mary, keep going.
Yeah, right, and we're trying to, I mean, both, both bathrooms are currently functional, so it's like, if we can keep this as, the same as possible, that would be perfect.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll report back, take another look at it. Um, the other thing that we wanted to talk about today is the courtroom design, and kind of where, where we are with that. Um, I know that, uh, we're, uh, just to give you kind of a, an idea, we have been working with the judges on courtroom furniture. So judges' bench, witness stand, court reporter, bailiff station, those items that are in the courtroom themselves. We've been kind of going back and forth. So I think the last meeting we had, we talked about wanting more of a, we called it orthogonal, but 90-degree, you know, rectilinear relationship to the court, rather than, uh, what we had previously, which was in the corner. Been working with the judges on ADA access. Now, we may not need to build it right now, but we need to make sure that we have the clearances required for ramps and things like that, so that should you need it in the future, you're able to provide that. So we, we designed it in right now, even though we don't build it. Um, and so those are some of the things that I know, Lara, you, you conducted a meeting with the judges last week.
Yeah.
What's the difference in elevations from step ups? Is it more like this, or is it higher than this?
So that was one of the conversations I had with them on Friday. Um, the debate, they're, they're still deciding whether they want one or two steps up, so it'd be one or one more, based on that, to their bench. Um, and we did have a really good conversation about how to incorporate a ramp instead of a future lift. So we would be building the ramp now, um, and making it compliant now. Um, and they did request a little bit of a re, I guess, a continuation of design, not really a redesign, but a continuation of design of, of involving, um, the jury bench and connecting that. So I have a really good direction, um, I feel like, for what they want now. Um, it's just a matter of incorporating and making sure that we're getting exactly where we're supposed to be at. Um.
Yeah, so, um, we're, we're at 50% construction documentation as of today. Um, our, our drawings go out, 5% set. Now, I'm gonna, I, I think our, our drawings go out in about. Okay, so, yeah, our 95% set goes out in about a month, and then, uh, the 100% goes out on the 22nd of August. So we are starting to kind of push into some time issues in terms of the millwork package that goes out, which would include, yeah, it's primarily the, the courtroom, so the paneling and the courtroom furniture things, items like that. So we're, we're, um, at. So we're, we're at a point where we're, we're going to have to work hard and diligently to get this out. So I think we're close with the decisions. We may need to have a conversation about whether the millwork package should go out after the rest of the drawings go out, if that's a possibility.
Yeah, a, a, as we work through that timing to keep our timelines out, you know, ideally, our plan is going to be. I don't want to split this around Labor Day holiday. We're gonna go out, we gotta have some time to review when we get that set on the 22nd. To finalize our bid package or descriptions, the letting, so it's gonna go out after Labor Day. What we'll do is if, if this is not in there, we'll define an allowance for a general contractor bid to carry for this stuff. We'll assist through that procurement and we'll have that as a defined allowance in documents. If design progresses past end completion deadlines as they finalize these details.
You know what material we're using for millwork yet? As a combination of everything?
Yeah, we've, we have budgeted a B-grade wood veneer.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we're designing around. Okay, the other, the other decision I guess we have is, or we're still trying to find is a carpet. And, you know, we, we may have to do an allowance on that as well if we don't come up with a carpet that, that is approved.
And, and, and both of those are pretty common bid practices. But my suggestion is, is if we do do those, we do need to find in those if we're, they have. Because the allowance is usually for, on the carpet side, it's typically only for the material, not the labor to install. Um, I'm hearing discussions right now between carpet squares like that's in here and or broadloom, so that's your full sheet product. That has really. I couldn't tell you, I think it's been 15 years. Broadloom and a.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any desire to do that. I would rather have a more of a carpet, either some kind of carpet tile or something that you could actually remove and reinstall something.
Scott, I don't know if you're gonna have an opinion there from a long-term and a maintenance perspective, but. Here you go.
I just need, I need RQW. RQW has a, an interior designer specking this building out. I don't, I want the carpet to match the design of the building and to put a full sheet of carpet out here. There's no way to ever repair or take care of it in the future. I don't, I don't have any desire to do that.
So I think that just to clarify what's, what's even bringing up the conversation to go that route is by color and pattern choice. To get closer to what's requested, it only comes in a broadloom custom type situation.
We're not a casino or a hotel or anything like that.
That's the last place I've seen.
Take that off the table.
Casinos and hotels.
Get off the table.
I would take it off the table.
I, I, we need to, we need to move past this design phase and get. We're running out of time. And for carpet for, for another 100 years, why we got two people that's, to have this decoration?
We're gonna have five sets of judges in the next 100 years who want it nine different ways.
I'm just.
Your carpet's only gonna last 20, so.
I'm just saying, you know, I mean, it's, it's a.
Yeah, let's go to the squares. Pick out the best thing that.
That's, that they could agree on and then just, let's, let's move on.
Okay, all right, duly noted. The judges have been, they've met with two vendors for AV and recording systems in the courtroom. And so when they decide on a system, then we'll be able to take that system and integrate it into the design. So that's, that's another thing that we're trying to, you know, get, get kind of figured out so that we can incorporate it into the design documents. One of the items that we've.
Has our IT gentleman been involved?
The one that's been pushing that, we haven't had any involvement. I know Dale's met with the judges and the vendors.
Just make sure they stay on the same page.
Yeah, Dale's spearheading it. It'll have to be approved by Dale, yeah.
We're looking more for direction from them once they decide.
Yeah, once we know what the system is. Um, a, another item we've been working with DNR on is the treasurer's cage and, you know, incorporating that with, within the renovation space.
And that goes back to the $50,000. I mean, and again, I don't want to say I'm done with that, but we're spending so much time on this stuff. I mean, if that cage is easy to blend in, so be it, but if it's anything complicated, just forget about the $50,000. Because I don't know how in the world you're gonna keep that treasurer's cage incorporated into the overall design.
If you look at the last page.
That's the jury bench.
Oh, that's the jury bench.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at, you know, could we take pieces of that and incorporate it like in the jury bench?
It's easy and no additional cost, but I mean, if we have to spend money to do this above and beyond what we would normally spend. Then the fifth grade math logic starts to kind of come back at us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, we're spending a lot of time on this $50,000 thing. And we got some people up in Indy that we could probably get this approved if we needed to, so.
You have a copy of that too, by the way. I think you have a copy of the restrictive covenant from seven years ago relative to the $50,000.
Because I mean, someone's gonna go in and cut these sections out, remove them.
And what's it gonna look like?
And reinsert them.
So I don't know that I've ever seen the covenant.
We've got a copy of that from, say, seven years ago. Make sure that you have that and then.
Okay, all right.
I'm, I'm, I'm a no-go on this stuff. By the time you pay someone, they'd, they'd. Get it, remove it, polish it, store it, reinstall it, and the additional cost versus just getting panels across there? I mean, it has to be more costly, I would think, but if it's not, move forward. But again, we're talking about fifth grade math, so. We're trying not to pay back $50,000. So we don't want to spend $60,000 to prevent paying back $50,000.
Yeah, got it. The idea was to maintain the integrity of the courthouse when we did it.
We need to read that contract too, make sure we can even do that. Take that back, I mean.
Yeah, have you, have you read through the?
I'll go to the Historical Society disciplinary board hearing and, and take the heat for any repercussions.
All right, um, that, I think that's all we've got for today on the update.
And we're on hour two of the meeting also, so I think maybe that has something to do with it, but.
Your meeting's running over again.
I know, we got Michael back and our meetings are two, two hours long.
Tomorrow.
So appreciate, anything else, we're.
That, that is it.
Really appreciate all the work you guys are doing, yeah.
That's got a lot of work, I appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you. All right, tomorrow we will be having a, a joint meeting with the council, following their council meeting probably around 10:00 AM. Just to have, just a brainstorming session, just from a high-level budget. Won't be really hard crunching too many things, but we had something that we'll probably do frequently as we, this project goes on. All right, any other questions or things, concerns? If not, I entertain a motion to approve payroll claims and adjourn the meeting. A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
We talked about that too.
Oh, yeah, um, so I guess I'll just.